Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education, regular meeting Tuesday, June 4th, 2019, to order. If you can, remember to please turn off all of your cellphones or silence them. I would like everyone to please stand for the invocation by Winter Park Baptist Church, Senior Pastor Paul Burgess, and then please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and Posting the Colors.
Thank you. Let us pray. Oh God, who is beyond all knowledge, yet invites us daily to know more. We thank you today for the gift of learning, for the great blessing of discovering the world in which we dwell, its rules, its people, its story, its challenges, its beauty. Thank you, oh God, for the shared value of education in this community, for the common conviction that as creatures made in your image, we possess eternal potential, and we are bound only by the degree to which we invest in our ability to learn and grow. Thank you for these gathered here this evening who represent our community's investment in that eternal potential, our belief in the power that an educated people has to build a better world. Bless these civil servants, oh God, as they discern and decide the route that will guide our children into their fullest potential. Bless their discourse and deliberation, and let their heart and minds be open only to pure motives, and close to those which would have them consider first any person or entity other than the children they are called to serve, and the people who have dedicated their vocational lives to the healthy development of their growing minds and hearts. We ask it as your children, all made in your image. Amen.
Outwards, eight. Precedent, colors.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stars and bright stars through the perilous sky? All the red flags we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the stars still in them gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
(applause)
Gentlemen, and welcome tonight. I am Jackie Booth, the Supervisor of Arts Education for New Hanover County Schools, and we would like to welcome the lovely ladies of Williston Middle School tonight. Let's give 'em one more hand.[318.02][318.02](applause) These ladies are under the direction of Ms. Erin Salar tonight.[327.52][327.52](applause) And we're going to have them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Madeline Leva.
My name is Amira Jigges, and I'm in sixth grade.
My name's Haley Whitehead, and I'm in sixth grade.
And we also have posting the colors this evening, the cadets from the New Hanover High Schools NJROTC. We will ask them to introduce themselves as well and give them, give their rank.
Hello, my name is Cadet Command Sergeant Major Juwan Laura, and I'm a senior.
I am Cadet Captain Andrew Thompson, and I am a sophomore.
I'm Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Juwan Watkins-Brown, I'm a junior.
And I am, and I am Cadet Captain Miles Irving, and I'm a junior.[383.03][383.03](applause)
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number two, approval of the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
The motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any additions or deletions?
None.
It is approved. Item number three, approval of the minutes. A, special minutes from January 2nd, 23rd, February 19th, March 22nd, April 11th, May 14th.
No further approval.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Item B, regular meeting minutes from April 4th, 2019. Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. Item number four, recognition of achievement. Item A, Community Partnership, Community and Schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening, everyone. We're so honored to have you all here tonight. We will begin our recognition ceremony by highlighting our good friends from the Community and Schools of Cape Fear. So at this time, I would like to present to you Ms. Louise Hicks, who is the Executive Director of Community and Schools, and Mr. Mario Jeter, Director of Operations, and they will tell us about the great work that they've been doing with us for years.
Thank you. Thank you so much for inviting us this evening. We're excited to share our story and express our thanks and let you know how much we value our partnership with New Hanover County Schools. Oops. Hmm, that's not it.[518.03][518.03](laughing)
That's the PDA files that were attached. Is there a PowerPoint presentation?
Yeah.
(pause)
Madam Chair, we could just, let's go to Hoggard, and we'll come right back to you.[549.16][549.16](laughing)
Work out our technical difficulties. So next, we began a school video series at the request of the board, and this month we are delighted to present Ms. Mary Paul Bell, and a video about John T. Hoggard High School, home of the Vikings. Mrs. Bell?
Thank you. I'm excited to present this video to you to showcase all the wonderful things that occur at Hoggard each and every day, but I have to give full credit to Mr. Darryl Rogers for putting this together, so I hope you enjoy it.
And here we need the Hoggard video. Thank you.
Please.
Yep.[640.16][640.16](pause)
This is my 23rd year at Hoggard High School, and it's been a very special experience. It's always something different and interesting, and even just on a normal day, in the classroom, and I get to see them grow, I get to see them start at one point in their educational career, and then see where they end up.
One really good thing about Hoggard is that we have a really awesome science department, and especially in chemistry, we try to do a really good job of engaging the students through labs and other hands-on activities.
What we've got going on at Hoggard as far as biology is, it's all about you. What other course can you learn about how you personally work?
We really try to harness in on the lab techniques that they might do when they get to college.
Make it interesting, make it real, and not just have science be a subject that you have to take, so I think that makes a great connection with the students.
I was a freshman, I was scared to even talk to anyone. Just coming in the state, that support group, that family, because you're with them basically, it's not 24/7, but it's almost 24/7, because you've gone a lot of trips with them as well, and you kind of, you have to build this relationship with them, and you just want to be there with them. I'm very appreciative and thankful for my teachers for, they just kind of like, they were there for me, and just building that relationship with somebody, because like I said, I didn't really talk to anyone, so I kind of just had the teachers as a backbone for me, I just constantly asked them questions, and they would help me, they wouldn't just brush me off to the side and say, "Look in the book," or "Figure it out." Just being involved in your community and the relationships that you see is really what makes Hoggard, Hoggard, we're a family.
Hello, I'm Mark Pisa. I am ex of RTC, that means second in command. No matter what place we get, we come out together, either last, first, second, we win together, we lose together, no matter what. We get to know each other a lot more. Seniors, we try to get involved with them, because they may have a hard time growing up through the chain command. After graduation, I hope I'll go to Marine Corps as a reserve enlistee in there, and then college next, that's what I want to be, Marine Corps Officer.
Hoggard High School is a great place to teach and coach, and we, as coaches, we're very fortunate to be able to work with the kind of student athletes that we have here, very dedicated, hard-working young people, both in the classroom and on the athletic fields and courts, and, you know, have earned Scholar-Athlete Awards, and then as far as the Mideastern Conference goes, we have won the Wells Fargo All-Sports Trophy in the conference 33 of the last 35 years, and that success can be attributed to just the work that our student athletes are putting in, and it's just, it's great to be able to work with kids like that. Our facilities are tremendous over the last 20 years, building Scott Brazewell Stadium here on campus, making improvements to the baseball field, the softball field, and the tennis complex, and then building our brand-new Sheila Bowles Gym, and the improvements that were made in Hebe Gym have made our facilities as good as anywhere in the state.
Career Technical Education at Hoggard High School is in an evolutionary stage. We're on a mission to reach out to our students as well as our community, and make sure that we're offering programs that are addressing the needs of the 21st century workforce. Next year, we will introduce course offerings in coding, animal science, and AP Computer Science. Our aim is to continue expanding work-based learning through paid and unpaid internships, industry field trips, guest speakers, college tours, and local business partnering. We're also most proud of our students that leave our programs with marketable industry credentials in such areas as Microsoft Operating Systems, Cisco, NCC ER Construction, AutoCAD, Adobe, and several others. As the economy and industry changes, our CTE programs will continue to evolve. We will continue to prepare students to meet the demands of today's workforce.
My name's Anna, and I'm the Student Body President for Student Council, and Hoggard students are really engaged and involved in their community, and so Student Council really provides an outlet for them to have an active role in, you know, what's happening at Hoggard, whether it's, you know, fundraisers, or Spirit Week, or dances, we sort of provide them an insight into what's happening at Hoggard, how you can get involved, and just, you know, seeing what you want to happen at Hoggard and making it happen.
The IB students are, they work on being globally-minded about sort of where they fit in the world, having a global perspective, and what it, how someone else might view an event from outside of the United States, and I think that's going to help them as the world shrinks and as, you know, we become more interconnected as a planet. They're really trained on how to communicate effectively, in both verbally and written, and that's going to help them when they go off to college, or whatever they get into next. That's probably the most important skill they're getting out of that, just in general. Hoggard kids are ready to go when they leave.
I'm Mary Paul Bell, Principal. I hope you've enjoyed a brief glimpse of all the wonderful things that occur at Hoggard each and every day.[1029.01][1029.01](applause) Any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Principal Bell, I just wanted to say congratulations to your Lady Vikings for playing such wonderful softball and representing our area so well, and your school so well in Raleigh this past weekend.
Thank you. It was a lot of fun to be out there with them, so it was great.
I intended to go, but my cold head of the
And soccer. Soccer, yeah. So, yeah, it was fun, it was a great experience, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mario, let's try this again.
Okay. We ready with our Community and Schools presentation?
Take two.
All right, hello again, thank you. Communities and Schools, for those of you who don't know who we are, I just want to take a little while to talk through what we do. Our mission, as you can see, is to surround students with a community of support, empowering them to stay in school and achieve in life. CIS is a national organization, it's a network of independent affiliates, meaning we are each our own 501(c)(3), responsible for our own budgets and fundraising, but responsible for implementing an evidence-based model of student support. Founded by Bill Milliken over 40 years ago, who believed that relationships change children, not programs. That's the heart of what we do. You can see in the blue where we are across the country, so we're larger than just Cape Fear. CIS is founded on five basic promises. Every child believes, deserves, and needs a one-on-one relationship with a caring adult, a safe place to grow and learn, a healthy start for a healthy future, a chance to give back to peers and community, and a marketable skill to use upon graduation. I think we've got a video from CIS National that really tells our story in a pretty profound way, better than I can just with words, so we'd like to share that for you.
Boy, a rough night for you.
No, I think they're fine, I think we're having the rough night.[1171.01][1171.01](laughing)
Okay, that works.
We'll just email you the link for that video.[1174.01][1174.01](laughing) So, how that works here in New Hanover County, we use an evidence-based model for integrated student supports, which drives the right resources to the right child over time. We partner with the school system and with the individual schools to place student support specialists inside of schools, and there are trained site coordinators that do this by partnering with the counselors, the teachers, and other adults in the building, and helping mobilizing the community to offer extra support in doing whatever it takes to help each child succeed, whether that be school-wide in the model, or as that's individual case-managed services for students. This is our unique model for communities and schools, as you'll see, they're the CIS affiliates, and then our staff are called site coordinators, we have our collaborative partners that we use to come into the school, based on the school's needs assessment and the school's improvement plan, we see where communities and schools' help can fit into that to help realize the school improvement plan. It takes all of us to play that small part in there, as far as the resources that help the students eliminate any barriers that they have to education, that then impacts what teachers are able to do in the classroom. It goes through that planning, and then we deliver what's called integrated student supports. We want all of the support to happen in the context of school. That also helps to foster a deeper connection between parents in school and the students in the school, because historically, children who've had challenges in school sometimes maybe have parents or other family members who've experienced those same challenges and barriers, and we want to work hard to eliminate those. And in our model, there are three different tiers of service. Think of that Tier One as school-wide. A lot of you know what Stuff the Bus is, and that is school-wide, that is, every school in the county gets a donation of school supplies, and it's a community effort, everyone comes together. Our Tier Two services are targeted services for small groups, groups of four to six kids together, receiving some kind of intervention based around academics, behavior, or coursework. And then Tier Three are one-on-one interventions. A lot of times, our site coordinators and student support specialists will become integral parts of a kid's behavior improvement plan, or their check-in with them each day. So as you see from that model, there's the school, there's the entire school population, then there's that tiered system of supports that I was talking about, Tier One, Two, and Three, and we're just a small portion of the case-managed students in the school. We try to not shoulder the entire load, but carry the small portion of the load that we're able to help each school provide those services.
You can see our list of schools here, these are the schools in which we currently have full-time site coordinators. New Hanover and Williston each have two CIS staff members on-site, and the other schools each have one. They're there bell-to-bell, all day, every day. Current programs include the site coordinator model, site coordinator model that we just spoke about, who provide behavior inventions after school. Okay? I think this is a previous version of the PowerPoint. So our site coordinators are school-based, bell-to-bell, an extension of your student support team at each site. We also have after-school programming at our youth center on the corner of 11th and Orange Streets downtown. The city has given us a building out of which to program, and we serve, I think we're over close to 100 kids so far this year, serving grades third through 12th in two distinct program areas, Monday through Friday. Everything we do is free of charge, our students and families do not pay anything for the services that they receive from us. We have a Young Parent Support Programming Arm. We're working with young parents from the ages of 14 to 21, providing a weekly Circle of Parents group, as well as monthly home visits to each of the participating families. And tutoring, we pull in volunteers who tutor onsite at each school, as well as we have a 10-week program called PASS, which just wrapped up last week. We had over 100 volunteers tutored individually, 143 students, once a week, each week the same kid, the same volunteer, for 10 weeks, prepping them for end of grades. We had a crew of over 30 New Hanover County employees who wrapped around Alderman this year, and actually were out there this morning as the kids arrived for their reading, or ELA, E R G. this morning, with banners and posters and cheering them on as they came into school from 7:15 to 8 o'clock this morning, which was really quite special. We also are the host, it's not a program of ours, but it's an initiative in which we're very, very involved, we're hosting the New Hanover County Resiliency Task Force. It's a community collaboration of, at this point, over 40 different organizations and companies, and close to 800 individual members, working on trauma-informed practices and resiliency across our community and across sectors, including, of course, the heart of our community, which are our schools.
So our program outcomes from last year, the total number served of students, that's that Tier One across the board, we served 13,377 students with Tier One services that were widely accessible throughout the school. Students receiving case-managed services from our student support specialist was 1,485, and of those 1485, 89% of them graduated, 99% stayed in school, 85% improved academically, 79% improved their attendance, and 89% improved their behavior. And lastly, if we want to give a plug on how to volunteer and engage, anyone in the room, we're always, so we're, this slide is talking about, during the day, Math 1 tutors are needed. I cannot be one of those tutors.[1547.12][1547.12](laughing) So, but PASS, 10-week, the 10-week tutoring program that we have going on at various schools throughout New Hanover County, and our after-school program, we have six programming sites in Pender County, so if you live kind of on the north end of the county, we can attach you to some schools out there as well. Our programming space that's there at 1102 Orange Street, we call WIRE, and also for our Young Parent Support Program, they always need some mature parents to wrap some love around them and show them that they're going to make it through and be all right, so if you want to contact us, our contact information is attached, and we want to thank you guys for being all in for kids.
Now, I want to thank you guys, you guys do some amazing work.
Yeah, those are great statistics. Thank you.[1590.41][1590.41](applause)
Do we have the video, or?
No, we will email you the video.
Wait, one question, you mentioned Stuff the Bus, can you share how many thousands of dollars' worth of supplies you collected last year that you shared with all of our schools?
Over $80,000 dollars' worth of supplies collected, we, this year, it's going to be August 16th through the 18th. We need a lot of volunteers for that, it's a great opportunity for kids to be involved with their parents, it's a really, really nice introduction to volunteering for kids. Yeah, over 80,000.
I would just like to say, I've worked with communities and schools in Miami, Syracuse, Philadelphia, Boston, and this department that they have created, and this group of people that run this organization here in Cape Fear is phenomenal. Thank you for what you do for our kids, and thank you for your partnership with the school system. Wonderful.
Thank you.[1648.62][1648.62](applause)
Thank you. Our first recognition for the evening goes to the recipient of the UNCW Watson College of Education Razor Walker Award. The Razor Walker Award is presented to individuals whose vision, tenacity, courage, and sacrifice have made a difference in the lives of young people in our state. With that said, it is my distinct honor to enter
So, if you want to contact us, our contact information is attached, and we want to thank you guys for being all-in for kids.
Now, I want to thank you guys. You guys do some amazing work.
Yeah, those are great statistics.
Do we have the video, or...
No, we will email you the video.
One question, you mentioned Stuff the Bus. Can you share how many thousands of dollars' worth of supplies you collected last year that you shared with all of our schools?
Over $80,000 dollars' worth of supplies collected. We, this year, it's going to be August 16th through the 18th. We need a lot of volunteers for that. It's a great opportunity for kids to be involved with their parents. It's a really, really nice introduction to volunteering for kids. Yeah, over 80,000.
I would just like to say, I've worked with communities and schools in Miami, Syracuse, Philadelphia, Boston, and this department that they have created and this group of people that run this organization here in Cape Fear is phenomenal. Thank you for what you do for our kids, and thank you for your partnership with the school system.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our first recognition for the evening goes to the recipient of the UNCW Watson College of Education Razor Walker Award. The Razor Walker Award is presented to individuals whose vision, tenacity, courage, and sacrifice have made a difference in the lives of young people in our state. With that said, it is my distinct honor to introduce Mrs. Rochelle Dombrowski, who is a veteran educator of 32 years, a social studies teacher at Laney High School, and the 2019 recipient of the Razor Walker Award. All of those wonderful teacher cadets, Mrs. Dombrowski piloted the teacher cadet program in this county, and she is absolutely amazing. So, thank you, Mrs. Dombrowski. Our next recognition is for students who received top placement awards at the North Carolina Science Olympiad. These tournaments are rigorous academic competitions that consist of hands-on, interactive activities designed to encourage K-12 students to pursue degrees and careers in STEM fields. So, students, when I call your name, would you please come forward? And I'd like the proud parents to stand. So, we will start with Hogarth High School, Jacob Tremstrom. James Wilt. Cooper Hildahl. And Emma Johnson. Hogarth finished sixth place overall in the state, and they were coached by Mr. Steve Clark and Mr. David Taylor. Would you come up? Can we get a picture? The Hogarth team? From Isaac Bear Early College High School, David Richmond and Grayson Seister. And they were coached by Mr. Brian Bishop. From Laney High School, Cody Karan. Luke Muller. Amy Leyster. And Connor Whitlow. These students were coached by Ms. Deborah Gill. Is Ms. Gill here? Thank you, gentlemen. I heard, I heard some of... I'm friends with some of their mothers, and they told me they didn't want to come, so we're really glad that you came. I didn't mean to rat you out. From Ashley High School, Savannah Kennedy. And Grayson Harris. These students were coached by Mrs. Gwendolyn Abraham. So, parents, if you're here and your student was recognized, would you please stand? We'd like to honor you for producing such outstanding scientists. Congratulations. Okay. Next, we would like to congratulate our Battle of the Books team from Myrtle Grove Middle School for winning the regional Battle of the Books competition and representing New Hanover County schools in the state competition. Battle of the Books is a program where students read from a list established by a state committee and then compete in a quiz bowl-style tournament to test their knowledge. So, students, when I call your name, from the Myrtle Grove Gators, would you please come forward? Gretchen Bernstein. Sophie Dickers. I see y'all with your cute t-shirts on. Kyra Hancock. Addie Hockaday. Julia Lornson. Miles Pollak. Tyler Price. Megan Rogers. Hudson Steiner. Thomas Suternik. His team was coached by the media coordinator, Ms. Leanne Carpenter, and Ms. Jill Bernstein. And if Principal Cindy Bliss is here, or the parents of these students, would you please stand? Congratulations, and go Gators! And certainly not to be outdone, next we recognize our district's Elementary School Battle of the Books winners. We would like to congratulate our fabulous Holly Tree Elementary School, who competed against 20 schools across the district, beating out Ogden and Parsley in the finals. Wow. When I call your name, please come forward. Gabe Archibald. Avery Fitzgerald. Mercer Godier. Savannah Clasing. Andrew Morris. Emma Rivera. Louis Small. Sophie T. Solomon. Isabella Wazilla. And they were coached by media coordinator, Ms. Kimberly Marone. So, if the principal, Mrs. Holliday, would stand up, and the parents of these outstanding readers. Congratulations, and way to go Cardinals. Your t-shirts are cute, too. I love this part of my job. All good stuff. So, the New York Times held a contest recently called Making Connections, which encourages teenagers to suggest creative ways to link school curriculum to the real world. Over 2,000 students participated, and we have two students here in New Hanover County schools whose essays received national recognition. And they are both from Hogarth High School. When I call your name, students, would you please come forward? Sebastian Zagler. And also Michelle Lamas. We are so proud of these amazing writers, and we thank you for being here tonight. If your parents are here, would you stand? And we thank Ms. Bill. And their teacher, Ms. Leslie Lucas. Next, we proudly congratulate five of our students who will compete nationally for the NAACP's Afro-Academic Cultural, Technological, and Scientific Olympics. Can't say that five times fast. Also known as ACO. The ACO program encourages high academic and cultural achievement among African-American high school students, and we are very proud of these students. They have earned a trip to Detroit this summer to compete nationally for awards and scholarships. So, our outstanding ACO students, when I call your name, would you please come up and let us honor you? From Laney High School, Ms. Kennedy Martin. Kennedy earned a gold medal in sculpture and a silver medal in poetry. Wow. From Isaac Bear, Mr. Cameron Martin. Cameron earned gold medals in short story, playwriting, and painting. A family of artists. Beautiful. From Wilmington Early College, Ms. Dara Devane. Ms. Devane earned gold medals in painting and essay writing. From Isaac Bear Early College High School, Ms. Lauren Lee. Lauren earned a gold medal in filmmaking. So, look out Ava DuVernay. And from Laney High School, Ms. Jackie Benetone. Ms. Benetone won a gold medal in contemporary dance. So, if the parents and principals of these students are here, would you please stand? Congratulations, students, and we are so very proud of you all. And that concludes our recognitions. Oh, the... I'm sorry. Cool t-shirts. That's right. Everybody had the cool t-shirt vibe going on tonight. We like that. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Quattlebaum.
Ms. Maxwell. Ms. Maxwell. Let me publicly congratulate you on the 100th anniversary this year. Yeah, the local NAACP celebrated their 100th birthday this year. Congratulations.
All right, moving on to item number five, call to the audience. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. Time does not permit dialogue between board and the community. And let me clarify, the board is, and this was a question that was posed to a few board members, the board is able to ask questions for clarification if that does, if that is an issue. That does not have to be initiated by the board chair. This is a board meeting, so, but it is not a time for the board to, or senior staff, to answer questions, because there's just not the time. So, I did want to clarify that. We are, again, because of questions that have been asked before, we are being very strict with the three minutes, so I apologize if I have to cut you off exactly at three minutes. It is not my intention to be rude, but that question has come up. While the board welcomes residents to share their views, the chairman retains the right to limit discussions on a particular topic when such comments become slanderous or personal in nature. We have had three individuals sign up. The first individual is Natasha Longo. Ms. Longo? All right, we'll move on to the second one and see if she comes in later. Angela Denise Connie.
Hi, good evening. Last month, I addressed to you on behalf of the victims of Title IX, but due to the focus being on the clock rather than the content expressed, our time expired prematurely. I do stand corrected in implying before that if you understood the long-term effects that abuse victims endure, you might be more empathetic and inclined to advocate. Based on the complete disregard and lack of compassion shown to one of the victims, who was brave enough to share her story last month, I now see that's probably not true. Sharing her truth seemed to have little effect on the board, and support was not extended, and most did not even afford the common courtesy to be attentive. It was said that you have not been made aware of any violations against students. How confusing, since we had just heard this personal testimony and continue to hear from students who have been victimized and then reported it to administration, only to have their allegations completely dismissed, and the documentation of these complaints conveniently misplaced. Claiming lack of knowledge can only be used as an excuse for so long. It's concerning and a bit frightening even that some have been a part of this ongoing transgression, that they remain in power positions. Equally responsible, though, are those who may have taken a lesser role, but are still aware, yet stand by silently and do nothing. Reason to believe that a child is being violated and choosing not to intervene is generally met with accountability and unemployment, rather than protection and promotion. Need I remind you that most of us in this room are mandated reporters with legal responsibilities? While it is not your job or area expertise to facilitate that actual investigation into these wrongdoings, it absolutely is your job to ensure that investigation is conducted by professionals who have these credentials to find the truth. The misunderstandings thus far have already tainted the investigation, but failure to act now is unacceptable. So, I'm asking you to use that influence that you referenced to create the power to promote safer schools. I'm hopeful when I see some of you venture out to visit our students and show much-needed presence in our schools, but please be sure that you actually intend to follow through and honor your word when you tell our children that you're interested in what they have to say and encourage them to share. To be misleading to adults is one thing, but to fail our promises to protect our children is another. With the exception of one board member who has remained consistently true to her word in previous six-to-one votes, I find it hard to support your actions thus far, specifically in reference to the blatant disregard for Title IX. We've received the message that you're tired of hearing our voice, that we're making noise, and that you're busy making positive change. that we're making noise, and that you're busy making positive change, and we're patiently waiting for that change. Remember that our noisy voices are the same voices that resulted in your election and will continue to use them because the consequences of not doing so, it's much too high of a risk. But make no mistake, if these injustices were committed against your children, I would speak every bit as loud on their behalf as well.
Next, Dr. Anne York.
Good evening. I'm here to speak again for EXO. Aren't our students amazing? It's hard because I feel like I can speak to you, but I'm not sure you guys can hear, and I want you to hear. You can, okay. Okay, this is the 41st year EXO has been going on. It's the premier activity nationally for the NAACP youth. And this is our, it will be our fourth year beginning this fall that we've done it in New Hanover County. We're so proud of our students. First year, we sent four to Baltimore. The next year, we sent six to San Antonio last summer. And this year, we'll be sending six to Detroit. Next year, however, and we are beginning in September, we meet on the second Sunday at 4:30 to 6:00 at the UNCW Library once a month. And we do things like mentoring and oral and written communication skills and networking and resume writing, things like that. And to prepare the students for our local competition in March. And then if they win gold in the local competition, they get to go, all expenses paid, to Nationals, which next year is going to be in Boston. So, we're very excited about that trip, already getting ready for it. And I just wanted to let y'all know that we do have pizza and stuff like that. It's actually very fun. And I brought some brochures that if anybody would like to pick one up, whether it's the board or parents, you know somebody who's eligible and interested. There are 32 different categories that they can compete in. And I finally want to say that we're just very grateful to Ms. Quattlebaum and also to the board for helping us publicize the amazing achievements of our great students. So, thank you.
One last time, Natasha Longo. All right, that is all we have for Call to the Audience. Item number six, Administrative Personnel Superintendent's Evaluation. Mr. Bullard.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I just, do I read the statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Every year, we do the superintendent's evaluation. The board has met, and we are in agreement and are going to be releasing the following statement. "We are pleased with the progress our school system is making towards providing a quality education in a variety of settings in order to meet the diverse and varied needs of our students. The board appreciates the superintendent's leadership and guidance, especially through Hurricane Florence and its aftermath. We look forward to developing a comprehensive plan that follows the board's guiding principles for redistricting for 2020-21, as well as beginning our work towards a county-wide bond proposal for next year." Does anyone else have anything to add to that? All right, we appreciate the work for this year and look forward to the work to come.
I thank you again for the positive evaluation. I've been here a decade, and we have some amazing folks in this district, from students all the way to the folks who do the daily work, and I'm proud to work with those folks.
All right, thank you. Do we need to take a vote or anything, or we? No, okay. Just making sure. All right. First time I've done this, so. All right, item number B, Administrative Contract Renewals, Appendix B.
I have two administrative contracts that I'd like to bring forward to the board for approval. These will be four-year contracts from July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2023. They are for Executive Director of Special Education Julie Askew and for the Director of CTE, Ms. Shamika Shuford. I would ask for board's approval.
Please for approval. Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? They are approved. All right. Congratulations, I believe Ms. Askew is here. And Ms. Shuford, you were here.
Let's ask them to stand so people can recognize.
All right, moving on to item number seven, Head Start. Item A, Liaison Report, Mr. Boyer. You gonna make it?
I'm gonna make it.
Sound better than you did yesterday.
Thank you, yeah, little by little. Head Start, as usual, is in a great place. As you see, our funding enrollment for three-year-olds is 260, four-year-olds 119. And we are finishing our academic year, so we'll have new numbers coming out in August. Other than that, if you'll turn to the expenditure report, we are finished with our fiscal year. We are at 99% pre-K readiness and supplemental services, 93% non-programmed charges. Everything else is green across the board. And as you know, next year is our renewal from the federal government. So, it's all systems go. We expect that to take place without delay. We expect a very positive review from the auditors, and I will take any questions that my fellow board members have. I don't think Ms. Miles is here tonight, but we're all in good hands. She's working, so thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Item number eight, Information. Item A, Community Eligibility Provision, Appendix E, Eddie Anderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Community Eligibility Provision, or CEP, is something that I know you've heard of and we've talked a lot about. We felt it was a good opportunity tonight to bring you kind of an overview. Imra Smith is the Director of Child Nutrition. She's done an outstanding job in expanding this program. We're up to a total of 27 schools now, which is five more schools than we had last year. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Smith and let her explain more.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, thank you. Lots of good news tonight. So, I've got more to bring you. And I'm going to talk a little bit about Community Eligibility Provision, which we call CEP. And it is a USDA program. It was started back in 2010 through the National School Lunch Act. And it allows schools with high poverty to receive breakfast and lunch at no cost. So, it is a great program. I'm going to go a little bit through how we determine CEP schools so you can understand how these schools were selected. And then if you have any questions, please let me know. And this is my first time speaking to you all, so I am so pleased to be able to speak and educate you a little bit about what we do in child nutrition. But CEP, I just went over what part it is in the Healthy, Hunger Kids Free Act. And the requirement to participate in CEP is you must have a good standing with the state, which we do. You must participate in the National School Lunch Program along with the National School Breakfast Program, which we do. And you must also, you know, abide by all the rules and regulations that all federal programs have, which are a lot. But like I tell people, you know, my job is to feed children, to reach as many children as I can in New Hanover County. So, this is a program that has, we have seen, has helped several of our schools these last, I would say, how many years have we, eight years? Six, no, six years. And now, we're adding on more schools. So, we're very, very pleased to be able to offer this program. Community eligibility, I'm going to say CEP because it is a mouthful, is a four-year program. So, once these schools are selected, they can last for four years. Every year, we do evaluate these programs, April 1st. And then we try to see if we can add more schools into the selection or we will keep the same remaining schools that have it. So, LEA schools, you know, we can opt-in, opt-out every year, like I said. And the requirements on the next slide is the LEA must have a minimum of 40%, what we call identified students. Those are not free and reduced students. Those are students that have been identified. As, they are part of the free and reduced program, but not all the children are identified. So, those identified children are those that, we keep track and record of those, the children that receive food stamps, if they're homeless, runaway migrants through the McKinney-Vento Act, if they're Head Start or Even Start. Also, if they meet any foster care. So, we do get a list of all the children in the foster care system in New Hanover County, and then we take those and we are able to apply this to what we call identified students. And then we also have some non-applicants, which mean that the principals have the right to apply for a child on their behalf and the household for them to get free meals at no cost. So, these right here, if you look at the selections, there are five of them. And those are the children that we look at, the number of children that we look at to incorporate into this formula that the federal government has given us to see if the schools will meet the guideline, the percentage that's at need. So, let's see. The next thing is this equation, and students here might know. No. But what we do is very simple. We look at the identified students. We multiply it by 100. And then we're looking at total ADM for April 1st. April 1st is the magic date all throughout the nation, April 1st. So, we look at the total enrollment, and then we get a percentage. And then, the federal government gives us something called an intrinsic factor, which is 1.6. So, we do multiply that percentage times 1.6 to come up with the magic percentage that will meet the needs in New Hanover County. And so, well, the magic number is 62.5% of identified students. So, once we reach 62.5%, that means that we can feed schools at 100% free, at no cost. What I decided to do, and looking at it to get it, to have more schools involved in CEP, was I was able to group schools, and every county is allowed to do this. So, we, you know, our percentage of free and reduced is about 50% right now. But remember, I'm just looking at identified students, that category of identified children. So, we did have several schools that met that. And I'd like to say that we have some new schools in red. We had several schools with us for the last six-plus years, but we have new schools on board. I'm going to read those off to you. We have Alderman, Blair, Bradley Creek, Castle Hain, College Park, Sea Rec, Forest Hills, Freeman, Gregory, Holly Shelter is a new one, Howe, Johnson, J.C. Rowe, the Career Readiness Academy at Mosley, Mary C. Williams, Murrayville, New Hanover High School, Pine Valley is a new one, Sea Tech's a new one, Snipes, Sunset, Trask is a new one, Wilmington Early College, Williston, Winter Park, Wrightsboro, and Lake Forest Academy are our schools, the 27. Plus, we have Virgo, which we're unable to incorporate. We have a partnership with them. We're able to incorporate Virgo into the mix. So, I'm pleased to say that for the next four years. And every year, I'm looking at it, at least we have 28 schools that will have meals at no cost. So, we will get this information out to the parents as soon as possible. I did want to present this information to you. So, you're aware first, and then I'm going to let the parents know. And then I'm going to, you know, let the schools know. The schools already know, some of the principals are very ecstatic about getting this new program. So, the requirements, there are some federal requirements that I have to abide by. And I have to make sure that, you know, we maintain account for breakfast and lunch by student. And that's what we do at our point of sale. And then we also have to make sure that we do not collect any free and reduced applications at these schools. So, we typically do not send free and reduced applications out to the CEP schools, but we do send them out to other traditional schools. It's just, these are the two main requirements that I have to abide by. And then, we have seen very, a lot of advantages to have this program. Like I said, all students eat at no cost. It eliminates identification issues for students, improves nutrition to students at risk. It reduces a lot of paperwork at the school district level, which means my office, so now I can brainstorm new ideas and new programs I can initiate. And then, we also see an increase in breakfast by 5% and lunch by 8%. We fed over three, hold on here, 3.5 million meals as of the end of April. We're still going. So, I do appreciate all your support, and I appreciate everything that you do, and I appreciate the students that come and eat with us and the parents that allow their kids to come and participate in our program. So, that's about the CEP program. Does anybody have any questions?
Do you do the calculations for, I know you provide lunch at two of our charter schools, do you do their calculations as well?
For Virgo, is that the school?
Virgo and Glow.
Glow is a different program, but Virgo was, because we are incorporated with the UNCW partnership, I was allowed to, yeah, but I do have to get their information. So, that is something that I have to manually track, yes. Any other questions? No? So, that's a great program. Yeah. You're welcome.
Look, there's not a person who is more committed to making sure that our students eat breakfast and lunch than Imra.
Yes.
I'm not sure if anyone could reduce such a complicated program into such a short period of time than Imra, so that's a great job.
And she smiles the whole time, you know, what she's sharing with us, good or bad. She smiles, that's wonderful.
Now, Imra, when you presented to the principals, you had props.
Item number B, Summer Food Service Program, Appendix F, Eddie Anderson. But I'm assuming you're going to hand that off again.
Thank you. If you couldn't tell, there is no one that enjoys their job any more than Imra. She does, she does a really, really good job at it. Another program that she's actually expanded is the Summer Food Service Program. Currently, we're feeding over 1,000 students a summer. And this year, you're up to?
A day.
A day, sorry, a day. And this year, she's 21 sites. All right, well, I won't steal any more of the thunder, so I'll turn it back over to Imra to tell you about Summer Food Service.
Okay, here I go again. We have, that USDA, the federal government's allowed us to, and these are programs that we have to apply for. And, you know, and it does take time to gather all the information and to get it structured to the way that you like it. But Summer Food Service is my heart. I know as school winds down, we're revving up. We are ready. We are ready in child nutrition to feed children, not only in school sites, but we're feeding them at churches. We're feeding them in community centers. We're feeding them at parks. We're feeding them at the library. So, I am very, very happy, not only that, you know, that we're dealing with the school system, but I'm able to partner with other community partners in New Hanover County. I'm from New Hanover County. I went to New Hanover High School. Ms. Nichols and I know that, the Wildcats. And Mr. Ravenbark, I think you went there too, didn't you? Yes, yes. So, you know, New Hanover County is my heart. Summer Food Service is my heart because I, you actually get to go out in the community and get to meet the parents, the aunts, the children, the family. Just, this is an amazing program. So, I'm going to talk So, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the Summer Food Service Program. As you, the next slide, we are doing really, really good in New Hanover County. We are like leading, we're, there's twenty-four counties that are feeding about eleven to fifteen percent of children in the county. And we are doing it. We're doing it in New Hanover County. So, I'm very pleased to say that we have a successful program. And believe me, I'm not gonna end. I never try to say that this is enough, because I know that I shoot goals and I like to always reach more. I love, I'm gonna partner with community and schools. I'm gonna get up with them tomorrow and find out what else I can do to help them out and to partner with them. But what is the Summer Food Service Program? It is a USDA program. We provide kids and teens in low-income areas free meals when school is out. And not only do we do it in the summertime, but I can take this program and I can apply it, like, I can apply it to intercession. I can apply it to whenever we have testing after school gets out. So, there's different ways that I can apply the Summer Food Service Program. But I'm just gonna talk about the summer for right now. But it provides free nutrition meals to children eighteen years old and younger. And so, younger, I mean, little, little, little ones come in and they eat. And it's amazing, because I'm seeing the future come to our doors and see, eating our food and tasting it, and it's just a great program. New Hanover County ranked twenty-one out of a hundred counties participating. So, I'm very pleased to say that you guys were representing, where New Hanover County is doing great. And not only, I'm a sponsor, so I do appreciate your willingness to allow me to do this. I'm a sponsor. There are four other sponsors in New Hanover County. But I do have one of the largest sites that I'm able to work with, and I'm gonna go over those sites in a minute. But we, I just wanna give you a review of what happened last year. We had twenty-three sites last year. We fed eleven thousand two hundred and sixty-five breakfasts, twenty-six thousand lunches, a little over four thousand snacks. The total meals are forty, about forty-two thousand meals in just thirty-four days of service. So, we fed a lot of meals. And we hustle, we bustle, we're out there. And it's, you know, it's a great program. This summer, as you see, we have twenty-one sites. I do have a few sites that are called closed enrolled, and those are, I'm not allowed to publicly, you know, I mean, I can publicly say who they are, but I, we, they, we have it closed enrolled to where there's specific clientele in those groups that have a special needs. So, those groups are UCP, Easter Sales UCP, CDC, Lake Forest Academy. Those are some sites that are, we do have additional to the twenty-one. So, we do have, we're gonna work with the same amount of days, thirty-four days of service. And those sites, I'd like to go ahead and announce, are Gregory, College Park, Murrayville Elementary, Forest Hills, Winter Park, Bradley Creek, Mary C. Williams, New Hanover County Public Library. And that was a fun partnership to establish, because I will partner with their movie nights on Friday night, Fridays, and then, during the week with all their activities at the main branch downtown. Rankin Terrace, Royal Palms, Martin Luther King Center, Lighthouse Shining Ministries, Houston Moore, Hillcrest, Village at Greenfield, Maids Park, Creekwood South, Union Missionary Church, Warriors of Christ, Warren Temple Church, and Tidewater Town Homes. And I do wanna add that last year, we did receive two awards, and I'll be presenting those during my Summer Food Service meeting, June 21st, if you'd like to attend, at eleven o'clock. Hillcrest received site award for the state. And then, we also, in New Hanover County, received sponsorship award. So, I'm very pleased to receive those, and I'm gonna present them with a large banner. All right. Three ways to find out. There's lots of ways. You can text FOODNC to eight seven seven, eight seven seven. You can call a one eight six six number, or you can visit No Kid Hungry to find out about all the sites in your area in New Hanover County. And I'm just very happy to, I wanted to present this to you, so you're aware of what we do in the summer. It starts June 24 through August 9.
Imra, tell them how you pick your sites.
We pick our sites by looking at free and reduced demographic information. There is a way that I can do a census data where I can put in an address. And even if the school site doesn't meet free and reduced, I can see if the area is eligible. So, I do pick some of my sites by area eligibility. I do try to make sure that I pick schools in the southern part of the town, central and north. But we do look at free and reduced information or census data. Does anybody have any questions?
If we wanna come and do a, help out in any way, can we do that?
You sure can, yes. Just call me. I'll be more than happy to go out with you. You're welcome to help us check off the kids that come through and just meet them. I do, I did, I have been collecting books all year long and supplies for kids, and I'm gonna be handing those out this summer. I've got tons and tons of books. The library's partnering with me. So, I'll be handing out books and supplies to kids, and I would enjoy any, if you're welcome to come with me and just pass out books with me. I would appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number nine, Superintendent's Report.
Just to let you know, we're in the middle of testing this week. We started science on Friday. We are rolling up DOGs this week, high schools next week. Remind you, there are some extra days next week beyond the originally established end of school year.
Okay, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Item ten, Board Chairperson's Report. I'm gonna hold off on the disability hiring initiatives. We're still working on some things, and I'll bring that back at a later date. I do wanna mention that we do have a, some exciting news. We do have a state championship. And I did wanna kind of, I'm sure everyone's aware that New Hanover High School baseball won the state championship. So, congratulations to Coach Voie and the team for that.
And they won last year as well.
They did. They're two peats, however you say that, dual peats. Hager just missed out with softball, so still, that's great. They were within two runs. And congratulations to Coach St. Ledger. And I was really sorry to see her name on the retirement list, so I think this was her swan song.
Three games, all of them extra innings.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, amazing.
Couldn't have been any closer.
And with a very, very young team. So, that's all I've got for Board Chairperson's Report. Moving on to item number eleven, any committee reports that anyone wants to talk about? No? Silence? Crickets? Okay. Item twelve, consensus items. Item A, Personnel Appendix G, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We request the board, or, excuse me. The board approved the personnel matters as presented.
All right, is there a motion? Do I hear a motion for approval of Appendix G?
No.
All right. There's a motion in a second. All those in favor, any discussion?
I think my wife's on this one, so I abstain.
Okay. With that abstention, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it is approved with one abstention. Okay. Item B, Budget Amendment Number Nine, Appendix H, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. I just noticed, as I was sitting here reviewing this, that the cover sheet under the federal update was actually a duplication of the other restricted revenue update. So, it's, the details for that are at the bottom of the federal budget transfers, but it was just to adjust for changes in planning to actual allotment, about twenty-five hundred eighty-four dollars, and to record a new Title I school improvement targeted allotment that we received for two-hundred-and-eighty thousand. That's what should be written in that federal box, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so what we're seeing on the screen is...
Everything is correct, but what I just read should be in that third box under federal. And that was a, when I was correcting the other restricted revenue, I put it in the, I put it in the wrong box. So, everything's correct, except for that federal should be what I just read to you. And it's actually written at the bottom of the federal amendment that you have in your packet. So, I'm...
I'm assuming everyone's gonna wanna hear a little bit more about the amount received from Michael Jordan and Nike. So, would someone like to speak to that, which is very exciting news?
I'll be glad to.
Okay.
We did receive, Laney received a donation, which is a designation from some of the Nike proceeds from him to the school in the amount of one million, I can't even see it from there, one million one hundred and eighty-five thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars. And it was designated to be split for use by the school, fifty percent for athletics and fifty percent at the discretion, at the school's discretion for other projects. So, we will be budget, that is really being set up now as a contingency in other restricted revenue, which will roll over, and then, we'll bring it back to you once the school decides how they would propose to use it.
Obviously, it's a very exciting, very generous donation from Mr. Jordan and from Nike. You don't get donations like that every day, or at all, really. So, it's just really astonishing for someone to come back and support their hometown and their high school like that. So, I just wanted to kind of single that out, because again, how often do you get a million dollars dropped in your lap like that? So, yeah, really exciting. I can't wait to see what they do to the school.
Absolutely. We'll bring it back once they make those recommendations.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item C, Change of School Assignments, Appendix I, Dr. Holliday.
Madam Chair, members of the board, request that you release those students to the neighboring school district, because their parents are employed by that district, and this is a routine request.
All right. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Item thirteen, Old Business. Item A, New Hanover County Schools Fee Schedule, Appendix J, Billy DeCotta Bomb.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the board's request, we have prepared a very brief overview about facility use fee structures. Back in February, we were blessed to be able to hire this young lady who manages that for us, Caress Clegg. And so, she's gonna talk to us about that.
So, we're just gonna go over all of our facility use. We'll take a look at the fee schedules, give examples of what a contract will look like, and answer any questions that you might have. So, right here is an example of a contract. We have a for-profit contract on your left and a nonprofit contract on your right. They, you'll see the fee schedules listed, what they're being charged for, their hourly rates. So, a nonprofit for the use, Hager Gym, the old gym, as an example for both. The nonprofit rate will be fifty dollars an hour for that. And then, for a for-profit organization, it will be seventy-five dollars an hour, which is what that contract is reflected of. And that's for your youth camps, your clinics, and your recitals. If this is a for-profit organization that is doing a revenue generating activity within one of our facilities, that rate will be a hundred dollars an hour. So, that does, there's differentiations of prices and what a contractor or client will see based on what their use of the facility will be. Next up, you wanted a breakdown of our facilities and what it costs to maintain those and how they relate to facility use. We have close to thirteen million dollars is what it costs to maintain all of our buildings, fifty-one facilities in New Hanover County School District. If you break that down, over those fifty-one facilities, you're looking at two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars per facility a year. And that is just for the standing building only. That's with it dark, pitch black at night, no lights, no water running. Those are your prices. Have it broken down for you, cost per day, cost per hour, and the average cost for each facility. So, for instance, this building, on average, six-hundred-and-ninety dollars a day just to run it on an off day when the lights are off. We're gonna take a look at custodial and staff fees next. We have, our custodians are paid, or any staff who's listed under community use are paid twenty dollars an hour for their service. The fee that we charge is thirty-five dollars an hour. That extra fifteen dollars goes to pay for their fringe benefits, which is gonna come to social security, any overtime pay, retirement, and insurance. Just also want to make a note that these fees help to offset that Legion Stadium cost of a hundred and nine thousand dollars that we pay the county every year for New Hanover High School's use of that. We also have now our annual utility costs. So, before I showed you the cost of a building just down and powered down, now, we're looking at what it costs us once the lights are on, once we're using running water, and once you factor in sewer. The red, we're gonna be looking at just your powers. So, you have your total energy costs from July twenty-ten and June twenty-eleven. Those are gonna be your numbers that date before our energy-saving program. And then, you have June of twenty-sixteen to June twenty-seventeen and twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, which are our years post our energy-saving program. So, as you can see there, we were five point seven million. Now, we've got, we got it down to four point seven million, and then, did a little bit of a spike back to five million for the total energy cost. And then, the total utility cost overall is up to five point eight million as of last year. We have our annual utility facility costs broken down from high schools, middle schools, and elementary schools. We also have it broken down for you by square footage, if you would like. Just to kind of note, and Murray and Minnie Evans are gonna be listed under the high school prices. Also, it's important to keep in mind that any time we turn on any of the buildings at Veterans Park, those, that whole power plant has to be turned on to get that running. So, even if we're just renting out a facility, a cafeteria, or a classroom at Anderson Elementary, we have to turn on that whole power plant in order to get that working and running. And then, we have our facility use expenses as of this year. Any questions?
The reason, yes. And I appreciate the presentation. The reason I asked for this to be placed on the agenda was because I've been approached by a couple of individuals from a couple of different nonprofit agencies. And we looked at this a few years ago on how to lower our costs to nonprofits for field usage. And I would like to see if there is a way that we could also look at how we could lower the cost to nonprofits for gym usage. Looking at that bill, if you go back to the first slide and you look at what the bill would be for a nonprofit to use our gym for two hours, six hundred dollars for...
Those are actually for, I'm sorry, eight hours.
For eight hours?
Mm-hmm. That is from running it from eight in the morning till, I think it was three.
Yeah, the invoice, it says seven hours.
Yes.
Okay.
Seven hours of usage.
Okay. But still, if you're talking about a nonprofit, say basketball, Hammerhead's Youth, that's a hefty bill for one day. If you're talking about youth basketball, whoever has, whoever's using a facility, if you're talking about Saturday practice, they're not gonna be able to pay a six hundred dollar bill every Saturday. And to me, the purpose of having those gyms is so that the public can use them. That's one of the purposes. So, I would like for us to look at how we can lower the cost so that they can actually use the gyms. We have these facilities available. The coaches are always scrambling. I mean, back when my kids were playing sports, they were always scrambling for gym space. To charge them six hundred dollars for space a week or a... To charge them six-hundred dollars for, for space a week, or a Saturday, every Saturday, just seems to me like we're not making it available enough. And I understand that we're trying to recoup some costs as well, but I just don't think that we're making it available to the very kids that we need to make it available to. We're not, we're not keeping the lights on, um, for the kids who need it the most. So, that's, that's my feeling. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I mean, it's New Hanover County school property, but it's funded by New Hanover County taxpayers. It's, they should have access to that building for a price that's better than that, if, if that's at all possible. I think that should be something we focus on and try to make a priority.
How often do you rent it out?
Hogard probably gets rented out on a weekend. Well, okay. They have a church service right now. That's a nonprofit going on every Sunday, and that church service has been going on for the entire year. Um, and they will renew their contract and be going into December. For a athletic event, we're looking at maybe once or twice a year that gets a rental. Mainly, when I see youth organizations renting gyms, they're renting some of our, um, less costlier gyms. They're renting a multipurpose room at an elementary school, or they're renting the middle school gyms, which some of those come at a lesser price as well. A lot of them also will have practices during the week so that, um, they don't get the custodial fees on those, 'cause anytime we open it on Saturday, we have to have one of our staff members there. So, to avoid that cost, we'll have a lot of rentals from Monday through Friday during the hours where we have a custodian or staff member on campus.
But I would think that, I, I, can't we be, I, I, can't we be, um, I hate the word innovative, 'cause we use it all the time, but can't we be innovative in how we look at this and how we, we open this up? Because, again, we want our kids in the gyms. We want our kids to be playing sports. We want our kids to be playing basketball and in there. We want the gyms to be used all the time. I do. I would rather have my kids there, um, in that gym, shooting baskets than out on the streets. So, if the gyms aren't being used, then we're not doing our jobs, uh, or we're not, we're not using the gyms for what their purpose is. So, to me, we gotta look at that. We gotta figure out how to make that work.
If it's during the week, and the custodian's there that you don't have to turn the system on.
But I don't even know why we have to have a custodian there. We don't have to have a custodian there for seven hours. Uh, to me, you have the custodian there to turn the lights on, turn the lights off, or if you have, if you can have, for a lot of these people that, they're gonna have a, uh, there might be an administrator that's willing to come in and open it up, um, or might be, might be available to open it up. You have the custodian come in at the end. Um, there's gotta be other ways of making somebody responsible for the, the, like you say, um, we're gonna have Saturday gym space available from, you know, for, and have a sign-up for different, um, different nonprofit groups. I mean, let's put a group together to figure this out, but if we're not having the gyms being used, then we're not, what's the point of having them? They shouldn't just be used for, for our groups. These are public facilities, to me.
I mean, I think you also have to look, but you also have to be careful, I mean, some of our facilities, um, you know, as you use them, you continue to wear down your facilities. And the fact that you have nonprofit versus for-profit, I mean, those are kind of misnomers. Just because it's a nonprofit doesn't mean people are making, not making money off of it, so.
And there are some liability issues that, to leave them, to let somebody in and not have somebody there on-premise.
Well, like I said, you have somebody who's responsible, but, um, it, I, I still maintain that there's gotta be a way of making this more affordable.
There's some things you can do with the fee structure, uh, if you wanna look at that. But the, our, but the, the person on site, the custodial charge, i- is not one that's gonna go away, 'cause if it's, i- if it's not being reimbursed through the rental, then it's money we're taking from something else to have to pay those fees. And like I said, I have concerns about leaving a building, come in, open a building, and then not having a school person on-site while the other organization is, is there.
You gotta have accountability, and I think that person there says, "This is our school, and we want you to respect the facility."
Yeah, if anything happens, they're right there, and they're the ones that are, they know the building, and so they can resolve it a lot faster than an outside person.
But if you wanna, I mean, looking at, looking at the fee structure, we can definitely do that.
All right. Can you bring back a proposal?
Yeah, I think I would recommend that we, what we did with the outside pieces were if it involves students, as opposed to simply a, an outside adult group using it, that that be, that definitely look at maybe waiving the fees for student-led activities.
Okay.
Uh, but we'll, we'll bring you something back, uh, by next month.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job. Lot of work.
All right. Item B, policies for second reading. Jeanette Nichols.
We have three policies tonight, and I think we'll take them individually, uh, for discussion and vote on them individually, in case we have some comments that we'd like to share. So, the first policy is thirteen-ten, Board of Education Meetings. Mr. Bullard, if you would like to address the changes there?
Yes, Ms. Nichols. Uh, the committee wanted to define, wanted to place a definition into the policy of, of, of what a hearing is, uh, because the board meets for several reasons. Sometimes it meets, um, for regular meetings like tonight. Sometimes it has a work session. Sometimes it has a forum. Sometimes it has a retreat. And then, other times, it meets to conduct a hearing on a employee or student matter. So, the definition of a hearing, uh, is added there, and also, uh, it specifies, uh, the day of the month that the hearing will typically take place, which is gonna be the second Tuesday or the fourth Thursday of each month as needed. Uh, that way, board members can go ahead and tentatively put those dates on their calendars so that, uh, if needed, uh, there will be enough board members to constitute a forum to have the hearing. Uh, a lot of months, you will not have hearings at all. Uh, as you know, some months, you may have four or five hearings, just depending on whether students are recommended for suspension or expulsion and, and ask for hearings before the board, and whether the superintendent is recommending personnel action against an employee who then in turn requests a hearing before the board. So, this formalizes the, uh, the dates that the board will set aside for those hearings, uh, also leaving flexibility enough in case there are scheduling conflicts and board members cannot attend on those days. The board can, of course, schedule a hearing any other day of the month that it finds convenient. It also, um, Ms. Nichols specifies that, uh, the, the annual student assignment appeal hearings, uh, will be held every June, which has been the board's practice. The board is gonna do that later this month. Those are the hearings that the board holds when students and their families, uh, appeal their, the, the school that they are assigned to for the upcoming school year. The day that that will be scheduled will depend on the number of hearings, and that is different every year, so, uh, a definite date is not specified in the policy, and it would, uh, there is enough flexibility to schedule that on whatever day is most convenient with the majority of the board.
So, Madam Chair, if we'll vote on that one, please.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve policy number thirteen-ten, Board of Education Meetings?
Moved.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
The next policy that I was going to present and ask Dr., um, Mr. Bullard to explain is one that, the reason I wanted this presented individually. But because we've received some different comments, um, some suggestions on how to go about this, I'd like to ask that we just delete this one tonight, and I'll bring it back to committee. Mr. Ridenbark will certainly work with us on that, and we will take into consideration the feedback that we've received and board comments, and see if we can bring one that's more viable.
Okay. Okay.
So, the third policy is sixteen-sixty, uh, the Board of Education Students Scholarships. And Mr. Bullard, if you will explain those changes.
Yes. The, the board, um, supervises and awards scholarships every year to, um, students who are aspiring teachers with money appropriated for that purpose by New Hanover County. The county is currently appropriating twenty-eight thousand dollars per year for that purpose, which funds up to four scholarships of seven thousand dollars per year. Uh, but what we found was, in the past, some students were preferring to go to, for the first two years, to go to community college to get their, uh, education degrees, or at least get the start on their education degrees, uh, rather than to a four-year university, uh, and the tuition was not as much as it would be at a four-year university. So, some of the students were not needing the entire seven thousand dollars a year. So, um, the changes, uh, say that the scholarships will be up to seven thousand dollars a year, uh, as needed, and that if there are amounts left over that are not used by the students, they can be accumulated by the board and then, uh, put towards an additional scholarship or scholarships in future years. Uh, it does specifically allow students to choose to go to community college for the first two years, uh, and then it makes a small change at the bottom of the first page, uh, instead of referring to, um, the board reviewing SAT scores as one of the criteria of the scholarship recipients, it broadens that to include other standardized test scores.
Thank you, Mr. Bullard. So, Madam Chair, if we can vote on this policy, please.
All right. Is there a motion to approve policy number sixteen-sixty, New Hanover County Board of Education Students Scholarships?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, the only thing I saw was, uh, under, the one change, does this make more sense to say, oh, no, go, go, go down, go down? Nita? Yep, right there. It says standardized test. Does it make more sense to say it's minor?
It should say test.
Yeah.
Yes.
Add an S to that?
Yes, we had that initially, but we, and the thing is that this policy, if you look at it, we've addressed it several times, which is good, because each year, we get a whole different challenge from students with different ideas and approaches, so, and the main thing is to find the best of the best, and so, fortunately, they're applying, and that's great. So, thank you very much for approving the policies.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right. Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Moving on to new business, item number fourteen. Item A, Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees, appendix K-one. And my name is after that. We discussed this last month, and, um, with the change in policy where we had said that we may consider reappointment of, uh, a current sitting board, uh, board member with letters of recommendation from both the community college president and the board of trustees. Uh, we do currently have that for the, um, for the current trustee member. Um, so, with those letters, I would ask that we, um, we reappoint Mr. Bruce Schell, uh, as board of trustee member for this year. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. It is approved. And Mr. Schell, I believe, is here with us tonight. Would you like to come up and say a few words about how it's going? Welcome back.
It's surreal. Well, it, I, I have to say, my favorite thing, um, with the school board is, uh, is DeCotta Bomb, the passion that she has, but celebrating the successes of the students, and I know that's a big part of why you're here. So, it's nice to come in to see that. Nice to see the, uh, the, uh, the bubbly Immer Smith made me feel like I was, I was home for a minute. But anyway, uh, it, thank you for the appointment, uh, all of you. As far as the community college is concerned, um, the community college has had, um, well, let me back up. Um, if you go back to when our economy in oh-eight and oh-nine, nine-ten was so challenged, there were, um, record enrollment at the community college. And people couldn't get jobs, so they, they geared up and, uh, put themselves in a position to get jobs, and that's happened. And, uh, uh, so the community college has been a success in that regard. But since two thousand and eleven, the enrollment has dropped a little, uh, over time. And, um, their funding, um, there's a lot of similarities between community college and, and public school funding, but their funding is based on prior enrollment. So, as numbers drop, they get less money from the state, puts more of a burden to get money from the local folks, the, i.e. county commissioners, just like what you folks deal with. So, um, I say that just to kinda set the tone of, um, of some of the challenges that the community college has, and so, um, they're trying to cut where they can through attrition, through retirements, look where they can, uh, they, where they have to rehire, where they don't have to rehire. They're looking at, uh, uh, things along those lines. I know, um, continuing ed is an area where curriculum versus continuing ed, as community colleges look at, uh, how can we make a difference? And, uh, I like that. It's, uh, it's where community college focuses on where there is a need. I think a probably a good example is, um, significant need in folks to, uh, power line, work, whether you climb the poles and do the work, and Duke Energy is, uh, probably a primary, uh, need there. And they have put a ten-week program together. They've graduated eighty folks that have got jobs from graduation, and thirty-three more that will graduate in, uh, this month. That's just one example of, of many. I won't get long-winded, but I guess my point to you all, too late, uh, my point to you all is that community college is doing a good job. It's a wonderful, uh, partner with, uh, New Hanover County Schools. Uh, they're proud, community college is proud of the, uh, counselors that are in the high schools and the job that they're doing, and they appreciate the relationship. I appreciate the relationship with the school board. So, anyway, thank you for the appointment. I'll, uh, as I promised you, Ms. Nichols, I will communicate with this board and keep you posted on things that are going on. So, any questions, Ms. Nichols?
Mr. Schell, uh, bulk of the college's funding still comes from FTE, and as those enrollment numbers dropped, and I've seen it in my classes, uh, the community college has become more and more reliant on New Hanover County school students. So, I, I, I'm a con ed guy, always have been, uh, but as the college shifts its focus, uh, to that side of the house, uh, I would just, you know, as, as our representative, I'd urge you to continue to, uh, push the interests of our students. Uh, don't let them fall off, 'cause, and that's where a big part of that money does come from. So, it's still really important, uh, the dual-enrolled program, WEX, um, that they're, you know, that they're big assets to that college as well, so, don't forget them.
Thank you, and I'll be happy to meet with you privately, if you'd like to talk about that.
Absolutely, and thank you for the work you do on the board.
Sure.
Good seeing you again.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item B, certified personnel recommended for contract, appendix L, Dr. Wilmers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Board may remember that we approved a policy several months ago, sixty-two thirty-five, concerning teacher contracts. This is the first time we've put that into place, and essentially, we're making a recommendation to the board tonight for approval of the list of folks who are coming up on- of folks who are coming up under these one, two, or four-year contracts. I'd like to just point out that there's 1,141 of them that are coming to you tonight, and 38% get one year, 37% get two, and 25% get four. So, I'm not going to tell you that I know what the statistics are, because we haven't done this before, but that looks pretty evenly spaced to me, and looks like it's, program is working to a degree. So, I'd like to recommend these folks for continuing or renewal contract.
Okay, I'm sure everyone read every single name on there.
Mm-hmm.
Do I hear a motion to approve Appendix L on item number B?
They'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all those, most, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you.
Sorry, my mind drifted there for a minute. All right, Item C, 2018, 2019 Year End Amendment Resolution, Appendix M, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. I would ask for board's approval of this year-end amendment resolution that is written each June. We continue to receive adjustments to the state budget throughout June, sometimes even in July for this year. So, this would give me the authority, since this is our last board meeting in this year, to continue to, to approve those amendments that are necessary, and to finalize the state budget for the not allotted items. So, two or three programs that the, the state covers the costs, not allocate a specific dollar amount, and we always, the actual expenditures, the budget is adjusted equal actual expenditures at the end of the year. So, I request your approval of this resolution.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Item Number C, Appendix M?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Thank you, Ms. Small. And you're up again for Item Number D, 2019-20 Interim Budget Resolution, Appendix N.
Yes, we, we had mentioned this before, but as we're working on the budget for next year, our plan is to bring a resolution for approval at our July meeting, somewhat dependent on the state budget board. So, this resolution would allow us to continue operations at our current budget level until that is approved.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve Item Number G, Interim Budget Resolution?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, Mary Hazel, you can keep going on those Xerox leases, Appendix O.
Thank you. Requesting your approval of a five-year lease for the two copiers that will be used in the print shop. These leases are fully controlled contracts, and request your approval.
All right. Is there a move to approve Item Number E, Xerox leases?
Moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. And, Ms. Small, Pension Census Audit with Cherry Beckett LLP, Appendix P.
Thank you. I'm thinking back in April, we approved our audit contract with Cherry Beckett, and then subsequently, we were chosen by the state treasurer for several LEAs were selected each year. This is our second time. We chose to perform an audit of the pension plan, and so we were, even though this is a smaller contract, the state treasurer does require board approval of this contract, $6,250 to audit the pension plan.
When was the last time we were chosen?
It was at least four or five years ago. I don't remember the exact year, but it's been a few years now.
Is it just random?
Maybe.
Is it just random?
I'm not sure how they select it. Probably it's randomly, just do two or three units a year, so I don't, I don't know how they, they select it. But generally, you go ahead and sort of add-on contract with whoever you offer this.
Right, okay. All right. Is there a motion to approve Item Number F, Pension Census Audit?
Moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, does it, everyone, did anyone want to take a break, or you wanted to just push on? Push on?
Push on.
All right, let's go. Item G, Tyler Technologies Contract, Appendix Q, Mary Hazel Small.
Thank you. We are very excited to be recommending this contract with Tyler. You may be aware that the, in the last couple of years, the state legislature approved funding to modernize school business systems across the state, and we're all using software that's about 30 years old that was required by DPI. So, this initiative is wonderful. They, they had an, had an 18-month RFP process and selected two vendors, and we have mapped the both of them, and it is our, it is our recommendation to, for the board to approve the state network. And this is the format for, from the state contract, to approve the state network with Tyler. We would be the first unit to be signed up with Tyler, and we would be one of three to five pilots in North Carolina that would be working with the vendor and the department of construction on, sort of how the information is going to flow between LEAs and DPI with this new software. So, we're very excited about it. We'll integrate everything we do, HR and finance, and make this much more efficient. So, we're, we're excited about the opportunity to have some input into the process, as well as move us forward. I'd recommend your approval of this contract. The state will fund it for the first year. They'll pay for all the implementation costs, which you can see are a little bit pricey. The implementation cost is a little, well, almost 1.1 million. It'll be 12 18-month process, and then the annual fees are based on $7 per pupil, but it was based on some, some estimates, some ADN estimates provided by DPI. So, that would be the price for five years. Renewals after the first five years would be based on act of the end of.
So, do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So, within that, that 1.1 million, is there, I'm assuming that, that there's training included in that amount, or is that just for the, is there training included in that amount? What, what's covered in those?
It's training, it's conversions, it's testing. We'll basically run both systems. Well, the first cost will probably be a few of testing. After that, we run another system. But the fact that DPI will pay to implement the, the annual fees, while we continue with our current vendor, for the fees that we're paying them, until we completely transition.
Okay.
And so, I have asked, it's not in this one, but I've asked DPI if they would consider paying the second year fees as well, because we don't take the cost that we pay. It is a great, both the question to continue after that, we are asking that they, so that's under consideration.
And so, what's expected of us as the pilot? Just, you're saying reporting?
It will just be a lot of planning, coordination, and documenting our current system, and how to best implement this transition in all of the counties. Every, every county can either choose one of these vendors, or they can choose their own, but if they choose their own, the state doesn't pay.
They don't, right.
So, we wanted to narrow it down to one of the two that the state was willing to pay.
Heck, yeah.
And I will say that we, we looked at both vendors without, when we were analyzing the system, without regards to cost, but it just so happens that what we like best is one of the plus and minus. So, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, that's the reason why we'll run two systems, because as a pilot, if there are issues, we need to be able to go back to our legacy system for backup.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, Mary Hazel, you are off the hook, and we are on to Dr. Smith.
All right.
Item H, 2019-2020 Title I Application, Appendix R.
Yes, would ask the board's approval to make application for Title I funding for our schools. The funding that is provided through Title I allows for schools to purchase instructional programs, to support parent involvement activities, as well as provide professional development and additional staffing for schools. In the application that you have in front of you, it overviews our needs assessment, provides grant details, outlines instructional initiatives, and provides the per-pupil allocation for the eligible schools within the district. So, would ask the board's approval to make application for Title I funding for the district.
So moved.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item Number I, Gifted Advisory Council Annual Report, Appendix F, Dr. Smith.
So, yes, so we have before you the Gifted Advisory Annual Report, and we do have some representatives from the advisory group in the audience that would like to make comments.
Okay, come on up.
My name is Michelle Manis. I'm your Gifted Advisory Council Chair and proud parent of one of those who had a Wildcat back-to-back champions. I also have two older high schoolers. So, I have an employee of the district, as well as a parent who's experienced the Gifted Advisory Council as this role, as well as been a parent and seen the needs of our students, as well as some celebrations. So, I, we do have the report, Dr. Smith has mentioned, but I also want to highlight a few things tonight to help you understand the importance of our specialists in our buildings. First, our Gifted Advisory Council focused this year on increasing the involvement with our school liaisons. Each meeting offered insights on how to advocate for gifted education and our gifted students. We're thankful to have school, parent, and community support for our AIG program. We are proud to be partnered with GISA, which is a partnership between New Hanover County Schools and UNCW. UNCW has worked with GISA to provide national-level presenters for parents and other gifted education supporters. If you haven't been to one of these workshops, please come out next year. They are amazing, and you're not going to see these presenters anywhere close to Wilmington, so it's a time to come. We are proud to have my friend and New Hanover County School Gifted Education Specialist, Kristy Howe, as a finalist for the North Carolina Teacher of the Year. We had New Hanover County Schools Gifted Educator, Michael Harper, as a runner-up for the NCAGT Secondary Gifted Educator of the Year, and he influenced my children as well. Gifted education specialists continue to be educational leaders by presenting at local and state conferences, even our UNCW Gifted Education Conference. We've had multiple grants that were awarded to individual school gifted programs throughout the efforts of our specialists. Our AIG supervisor, Donna Sloan, presented at the state level on how to start an advisory group, such as we have here in New Hanover County, and shared the supportive relationship of our GAC and the Board of Education. We focus on that creating a strong homeschool connection with open communication as a must for all our gifted education specialists. The parent group felt very strongly in having them maintain a strong website with a rubric created with the collaboration of our specialists, the AIG supervisor, and our council with our liaisons. Those websites include resources for parents, teachers, and students. And in closing, our recommendations include, for the next school year, continue our funding for one full-time AIG specialist at each of the elementary and middle schools, as well as consider that increasing that funding to support the full, a full-time gifted education specialist at each of our high schoolers, high schools, traditional high schools. I see the impact as a parent right now. I assure you, you could not find the resources that are sent to us and shared with us that we have right now, and it's really just the tip of the iceberg with the impact of these people at our high schools. These recommendations will provide our gifted students with the essential components to ensure success inside and outside of the classroom, and continued success of the New Hanover County Schools AIG programs as one of the best in the state.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm prepared for questions.
And we would ask the board's approval of this annual report.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? No? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Dr. Smith, you're still up.
Yes.
AIG Plan, 2019-2022, Appendix, I'm assuming that's 2020.
Thank you. Every three years, we must review our academically gifted plan, revise it, and then resubmit it to the state for approval. So, what is in front of you is that revision. In the plan, it details the district's actions in the six required standards of the AIG plan, specifically student identification, comprehensive programming, differentiated curriculum and instruction for students, personnel and professional development, partnerships, and then program development. And we do have with us part of the folks who put together this plan. It was a collaborative effort with not only our supervisor for our academic gifted services for the district, but also specialists across the district in input from several stakeholders, using surveys from parents, teachers, staff, and administrators. And so, we would ask your approval of this plan so that it could be submitted to the state.
All right, thank you, Dr. Smith. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. All right, I have been asked to take a five-minute break, so we will do that and be back here at 7:49.